Actually, uh... So, I apologize for the late start. I'd like to open the, uh... This evening's meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Adam Hoffman. I'm filling in for our chairman Ken Kozick, who is unavailable tonight. To my left is R. Scott Robb. He's a member. To my right, the woman that just got up to go find Roland Bartle, the town planner, is Nina Pickering Cook. She's town council. And seated to the right in the yellow jacket is Vivian Burchell from Land Use Development Department. Let's see. Now, um... The agenda for tonight is, um... We have some regular business, which includes just approving the minutes from the prior meeting. We'll do that shortly. During that time, we're just waiting for another attendee to show up. And as soon as Roland comes back, we can get into the full meeting, whether or not the other person does show up. And then we will reopen this hearing with respect to, uh... For Piper Road, Ninety School Street. Because, um... I just want to make a special comment with respect to the absence of our chairman Ken Kozick. Because Ken is unavailable today, this meeting is being recorded. If and when there is a presentation, um... Please note the visual materials that you are discussing. So when Ken replays the recording, he also has the context for the visuals. And we would like those to be submitted as well to the town. Those will be put up on DocuShare with all the other documents to be made available to the public. In addition, because Ken is unavailable, um... Any decision with respect to a 40B is required by law to have all three members of the Zoning Board of Appeals present to deliberate and vote on it. And so because only two members are available tonight, we cannot take a vote. So therefore, there will not be a deliberation. There will be a continuation. And the continuation is now scheduled for Tuesday, October 1st, at 7:30 in this same room. One other note, uh... Just want to remind everybody, this is a public hearing. If you haven't already, when you came... First came in the room, please sign the attendance sheet. And, uh... And then the process is, once we get going after we go through our minutes and such and take care of some administrative items, once we reopen the hearing, when you come to the podium, if you have something to say, please state your name and your address before you make any comments. So basically, just identify yourself.
Or were you... Do you have any written agendas?
Yes. I don't think we print them out for everybody. I can read it to you. It's available online. The agenda for tonight is, number one, regular business. Two subbullets, approve previous meeting minutes and administrative updates. The administrative update that we have is... The next meeting is October 1st. And, um... The second section is new special business, and that's the reopening of this hearing. Hearing 1907 slash 11. That is the agenda. Uh, let's see. When, uh... We started the meeting, I introduced the folks around the table. That's Roland Barton, uh... Roland Bartle, and he is the planning director for the Town of Acton. With that, I think we'll go to our first order of business, which is approving the previous meeting minutes. Yeah, sorry.
Question, how is the meeting recorded?
Recording device? Who has the...
That somewhat... Will modify the issue?
Yeah. Putting the visuals into context with the recording, yeah.
Thanks for getting that.
Thanks. Okay, then. Before we reopen the hearing that most of you are here for, um... Scott, have you had a chance to review the meetings from September 3rd?
Yes, I have.
Do you have any changes or edits?
No changes.
Would you like to make a motion to approve the meetings from September 3rd?
Like to make a motion to approve, uh... Last time's meeting, last...
I would appreciate being able to talk louder, please.
Sorry. It is on, sorry. Did you have any changes or edits to the meeting?
No changes to the meetings, uh... To the me... To the edits, no edits or changes to the minutes.
Can I have a motion to approve the...
Motion to approve?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. No... Minutes for September 3rd meeting have been approved. Okay. We are now going to reopen special hearing 19-07 slash 11, uh... For Piper Lane slash Ninety School Street. As I mentioned earlier, we are required by law to have three members of the Zoning Board of Appeals present in order to vote on a petition. And because Mr. Kozick is absent, we'll be continuing the meeting to October 1st to address open issues and potentially close the hearing upon deliberation and then vote on a decision. The focus of tonight's hearing will be traffic and studies. I know there are some open issues with respect to civil engineering and others. The reason we're not discussing those tonight is because, um... The civil engineering documents submitted by legal counsel from South Acton Neighborhood Association were submitted Friday after closing hours for Town of Acton. Therefore, nobody has had a chance to review them. SANAA's council has agreed, um... To postpone and have that discussion at our next meeting on October 1st. In the past meetings that we've had, uh... The petition we're about to discuss has had an active and lively emotional discussion. My personal opinion is, I think that's healthy. However, we want to make sure that everybody feels safe. And to that extent, we have representative from the Acton Police Department in the right corner of the building. If necessary, he will provide an escort off the premises for anyone deemed a threat. And I don't have a lot of flexibility and tolerance. If, uh... If I feel threatened, anyone on the board feels threatened, anyone in the audience feels threatened, we will have you escorted out. What I'm going to do now is just provide a very brief summary. Many of you have been here throughout the previous meetings. If you haven't, all this material, all the detail, if you want to read through it, is available on DocuShare. I'm going to give a very high-level overview, just so people understand where we started from and how we got here. Pretty much just covering some dates and maybe highlighting a few key things. Then what we'll do is, I'll ask the applicant if the summary is accurate and then what information they'd like to add, what do they want to... I will ask Roland from Town of Acton the same question. And we also have Nina here, uh... Representing council for the Town of Acton. So once the discussion begins, uh... If there are details that we need to elaborate on or go deeper, take deeper dives into, we have folks here who can help us with the answers. Again, I just want to remind folks that we will not be deliberating and making any decisions here tonight. So we're just going to be discussing traffic and safety-related issues. And let me just give a quick summary. I'll do a quick high-level overview. I have a second document, um... Maybe add a few things, and, uh... And then we'll hand it off to the other folks. So initially, this process started on April 2nd. There was an application filed for a comprehensive permit to, uh... Develop a project including 28 dwelling units, um... Down from the initial proposal, uh... Which consisted of 40 units. Of the 28 dwelling units, seven of those are proposed to be affordable. On May 6th, um... There was a discussion as to whether related... A related application for safe harbor applied to this matter. On May 13th, a decision from Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, considered that a denial of the permit of the imposition of conditions would be consistent with local needs. On June 21st, the DHCD issued its decision, and they found that the prior permit application was not a related application. The housing production plan certification would not be granted to include the units proposed for the Avalon 2 project. And subsequent to that, on June 18th, the applicant refiled the exact same application or reapplication in an effort to get around a stay arising from any potential appeal to HHC of the DHCD's safe harbor decision. And so even if there was a related application, that safe harbor would not apply to this reapplication. And so everybody agreed on July 15th that we would open the reapplication, which we did in our previous meeting. Let me see if there are a couple other things I want to fill in before I hand it off. Yeah, I do also want to mention that there was a memorandum of agreement. So at a prior meeting, um... After the DHCD came down with their decision against the Town of Acton, um... In effect, then, um... At a prior meeting, the council from all the representative groups got together to discuss ways that the town and the applicant might be able to work together. And a result of that was a memorandum of agreement. If anybody wants to get into details of that, we can do that at the next meeting. Will you be at that meeting, perhaps? Nina will be at that meeting. And you can also read up on the details of the document online. Anyway, so a memorandum of agreement, um... Was agreed to by all the parties involved. And, um... As a result of that memorandum of agreement, um... It was agreed to by the Selectment Board of Selectment of the Town of Acton and presented to the Zoning Board of Appeals at the July 15th meeting for our signature. We did sign it. I have a copy of it here, if you want to see it later. Or, again, it's also online. Uh, let's see. You keep changing. So, um... Before I hand it off, I think the only other thing I want to add is, um... So now we're focused on the reason we're here for tonight's meeting. The big issue has been safety and traffic. It's been a big concern for the applicant, for SANAA. And, um... There were traffic and safety reports submitted by both groups, by engineering companies representing both groups. At a previous meeting, there was an agreement that a peer review of the traffic and safety reports would be conducted. The, uh... The town proposed some names for the peer review. A name was selected. A company called Vaness was chosen for the peer review. They submitted their feedback based on the submissions of the applicant and SANA. And tonight, we're here to hear from the applicant. We're here to hear from SANA. And, uh... And do we have the representative from Vaness? And we also have the representative from Vaness, representing the town, or the person, the company that did the peer review here, to have this discussion and, uh... And to hear what all the parties have to say. Again, we are not making any decisions tonight. There will be no deliberation, and there will be no vote. Those will both happen at the October 1st meeting. Any questions? Okay. Lou, I know it was real high-level, and I kind of brushed over it. Do you have any additions, comments?
I just think you might not want to restrict yourself to the October 1st meeting to make a decision. That's all I would suggest to the board, but that's up to you.
Yeah, just to clarify that, um... We... What I should have said is, we can deliberate. There's the potential to deliberate and come to a decision at the October 1st meeting, but it doesn't necessarily have to happen. And I think the ultimate deadline is, is it January 11th, Nina? If I remember correctly?
January 15th.
I think the 180 days from the MOA is January 15th. Okay.
What?
January 15th.
Well, give or take a day, whatever 180 days are from July 15th.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
That's all.
Okay. Roland, any additions, comments?
Only that the hearing had to continue a number of times since July 15th without any hearing deliberations.
Yeah. Okay. Right. Yeah. Yeah. Applicant wasn't present, nobody was present. Nina, anything you'd like to add? Okay. Then let's turn the floor over.
Very briefly, I think as the chairman indicated, we were here in July. In the interim, there's been a traffic review done by the applicant, submitted to the town's peer review. Vaness Associates, Mr. Dirk. Mr. Dirk made comments, accepting most of what the applicant's traffic engineer had suggested, but wanted it to be reconsidered as to one aspect. There was a resubmission made by Mr. Cramp. He's from Bayside Engineering, and he will speak in a moment. That was submitted, and Mr. Dirk reviewed that, issued a report. I'm going to let him speak for himself. I'm not going to say what these reports said. I think it's, you know, inappropriate. Last Thursday, um... Tetra, on behalf of SANA or somebody, submitted their review of what had been reviewed by Mr. Dirk and Mr. Cramp. And they're here, I believe, tonight to speak to it. I think the biggest issue in this project is, um... Traffic, whether or not, is there an issue? I would hope that when you hear tonight, you'll see that it is a appropriate project. And the other remaining issues, we can discuss at the next meeting. I'm fine with that. I would like to limit it and give the folks that are here, Mr. Cramp, Mr. Dirk, the woman from Tetra, a full opportunity to answer any questions the board have and to make a complete presentation and not to cut them off, you know, by other discussion that doesn't need to happen tonight. So maybe it'll happen quick, and we can go home early. Maybe it'll take longer, but at least let them do it. This is Ken Cramp. Again, he is a professional engineer, and he's done the traffic review for the applicant. Ken?
Good evening. Thank you for that introduction. By way of just providing a little history, I have brought my resume for the file. I have never been before the Acton Zoning Board in the past. But I am the Director of Traffic Engineering at Bayside Engineering, a small civil consulting firm located in Woburn, Massachusetts, where we focus on transportation planning, civil engineering design, transportation systems management, as well as truck moves, which is very lucrative in our field. I've prepared numerous studies over the course of my, oh... 37-year career. I've provided a list of some of those. I've done many 40B projects over the past 10, 15 years. The biggest, 364 units. The smallest, right now, I'm doing one, actually, it's only 16 units. I've testified before zoning boards, planning boards, boards of selectmen's, as well as in land court on a variety of different cases. And I think we'll stop there. As indicated in the description, we prepared a number of letters over this past spring and summer where we looked at the traffic on School Street for the proposed project. And let me just clarify. I did not know in one of the letters that the driveway was given a name of Summit Drive, so I may have referred to it inadvertently as Piper Lane in one of the letters. So just for clarification, it is Summit Drive. It's a separate driveway. Starting about almost a year ago now, we started by doing some traffic counts on School Street. We did them on east of Piper Road. And the counts are summarized up on the screen. We found about 53, 50 vehicles. We found about 53, 50 vehicles per day, roughly 50 going eastbound, 50 going westbound approximately, with 517 vehicles in the morning peak hour and 600 vehicles in the weekday evening peak hour. In the morning, you see almost 60% were headed eastbound. In the evening, almost 74% were heading westbound. And that's just the directionality factor of basically where the site's located. The traffic volume data, as I said, originally was collected in October of 2018. And we looked at available data from MassDOT that maintain a number of permanent count stations across the Commonwealth. And we used one or two of these to see if October volumes were average, below average, or above average conditions. And October volumes were close to representing average month conditions. So we felt we had a good handle on the traffic volumes. Another thing we did was, when we did our counts, we actually recorded the speeds of vehicles. As we all know, the posted speed limit on School Street's 25 miles per hour. And we found that the average speed eastbound was 27, the average speed westbound was 29, and the 85th percentile speed was 30 in the eastbound direction and 32 in the westbound direction. You may be wondering, why do we have the 85th percentile speed up there? The 85th percentile speed is used for assessing site distances. It's typically, it's the accepted standard as identified both in MassDOT guidelines and in the, what we call the ASHTO manual, the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials' Guidebook, which summarizes the information relative to site distances. To get an idea of how much traffic we're talking about generating, we looked at what the traffic would be for a multifamily housing project. This case here, we have 28 units. So we looked at the Trip Generation Manual published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, the latest edition being the 10th edition. And it gives us a bunch of land use categories, and that is what we use to establish trip generation for various types of projects. In this case, we have a residential project, it's 28 units. So we used Land Use Code 220, which is multifamily, low-rise, when it's less than two stories. And it shows that, based on the compilation of data, the 28 units, we projected to generate 14 trips in the morning peak hour, three vehicles would be entering the site and 11 exiting. And the evening peak hour, it would be reverse, 12 vehicles entering the site and seven vehicles So I'd mentioned this earlier, the ASHTO geometric design of highways and streets. It's the guideline, a policy, that we use to work with, and it provides a compilation of all kinds of data relative to the design of streets and roadways and intersections. And particularly, it focuses on, one of the things it focuses on is site distances, which we were asked to primarily assist with assessing when we first got the project. So we did assess the site distances. We go out there, we actually, initially, the first time we did, we went out and actually physically measured them in the field. And then during the course of the project, questions were raised. So we did the next best thing. We went out and actually did our own survey. Bruce Wingwall's firm from GPR, they did the actual ground survey. So we knew exactly what we had for slopes, alignment, curvature, where the center line of the road was, which we used in our subsequent letters of July 31st and September 4th to assess the site distance. There were, there are two site distances that we evaluated, stopping site distance and the intersection site distance. Stopping site distance is that distance that a vehicle requires to come to a stop when it's traveling on a main road and it sees an incident or something happening at the edge of the road and needs to come to a stop. In other words, when a vehicle sees a rolling ball come out into the street, they know a child is most likely coming right thereafter, so they want to make sure that we can be able to stop. So through various studies over time, and what's presented up there are both the metric and the US customary units, the formula to determine what is required for a vehicle to come to a stop. That information has also been tabulated in the ASHTO manual and rounded to the nearest five, but we could also simply do the mathematical calculation and come up with to the single There is also a grade adjustment for site distances. I won't get into the number of variables you see there, but basically, it's an adjustment based on whether you're on a downgrade or an upgrade. Obviously, if you're on a downgrade, you're going to require more time to stop. And if you're on an upgrade, you're going to require less time to stop because you have basically gravity working for you. The next chart simply shows what, again, rounded, what the actual numbers would be depending on what your design speed is and your grades. Now, of course, not every road is going to be in a 3%, 6% or 9% grade. They do vary. And in our case, we were generally level or had a 5.5% grade. Similarly, the intersection site distance for left turns or right turns, in this case, we have the left turn chart up there. This is the distance that, in the old days, and, you know, I can refer to the old days because I'm old, the rule of thumb was, you did not want a vehicle traveling on the main line to slow down more than 70% of its ambient speed. But that was, like I said, the old days. They've now gotten away from that, so to speak, and they have it more of a mathematical formula, again, to come up with, what distance should you have for a vehicle to turn left out of a side street or a driveway without significantly impacting the flow on the main line? And we have, also, that's been tabulated by the ASHTO manual, and they give you a table as well. But most everyone has created a spreadsheet to do, you know, the mathematical calculations for you. And again, same thing, intersection site distance for right turns, same basic formulas, less of a gap requirement in terms of what the speed is because when you're making a right turn out of an intersection, you only have to cross or merge with one stream of traffic, whereas if you're making a left turn, you have to cross one stream of traffic and then merge with the other. So the basic difference between site distance calculations for left or right turns is the gap that you have to require to take. And again, the ASHTO manual summarizes those calculations for us. So in July, we provided updated information to the zoning board, which was peer reviewed by Jeff Dirk of Vaness and Associates. And we provided in the early September, on September 4th, a response letter with revised graphics showing the stopping site distance and intersection site distance calculations. Now, we meet the stopping site distance calculations. As I indicated, the stopping site distance calculations, you're looking at an object, you will be looking, as you're driving on the road, the driver's height of eye is three and a half feet above the road. That's the standard that is used. And you're looking for an object that's two feet tall at the edge of the traveled way. That is the basic measurement that is done. And based on our assessment, we have the adequate stopping site distance. However, because School Street is on a curve and there is a hill heading in the westbound direction, that's the hill with the 5.5% slope I mentioned earlier, we do not have the intersection site distance that ASHTO suggests that we have in their policy guidelines and calculations. However, ASHTO does say, and I will quote, "If the available site distance for an entering or crossing vehicle is at least equal to the appropriate stopping site distance for the major road, then drivers have sufficient site distance to anticipate and avoid collisions." So this is what ASHTO recommends, when you can't always provide the intersection site distance, because there are oftentimes, even today, intersections that we travel that do not meet the adequate intersection site distance if we were to go and gather the speed and the counts and find out what they are and assess them. They recognize that that can't always be provided. So having gone back and forth and as a result of the comments on the first review, we took a second look at the intersection site distance, looking to the west, and that's up the hill because that is the critical one. We believe we have adequate stopping site distance to the east. Again, the intersection site distance is not what ASHTO recommends, but it exceeds or is equal to the stopping site distance. Wrong button. So this is just a summary of the site distance calculations, showing that the required minimum for the stopping site distance is 208 feet coming from the east and 234 feet coming from the west, and our measured are in excess of that. And I just want to point out that these sight lines are either on our property or within the public layout of School Street. They do not extend across private property because we cannot guarantee that the private property would maintain in perpetuity a clear sight line unless we were to negotiate a sight line easement or something, which is not the case here. So here is the original graphic. This is of a vehicle at the proposed site driveway. We've discussed this going back and forth many times, and we've ended up shifting the driveway several feet to the east. And this shows that we have 241 feet approximately, maybe a little bit more, of sight line for a vehicle that is looking to the right to see a car coming down the hill, traveling eastbound on School Street. And I apologize for the poor clarity here, but the bottom figure is a sight line profile, which shows that the sight line is over and above the existing grade information provided by our base survey, with a clearance of about six to eight inches, I figure. Now, this is, this location was determined, again, based on ASHTO standards. The edge of traveled way for School Street is not clearly defined. So, but because we had the center line of School Street from the survey, we assumed a 12-foot wide travel lane. And then we offset from the center of that travel lane 20 feet back to get the location of the driver's eye, in this case here. ASHTO says, you know, you should measure 20 feet back from the center line of the closest travel lane. So what we have here is, again, assuming a 12-foot lane, so that's six feet. We measured six feet off the center line and then 20 feet from that line to get our driver's eye. I have done this sight line assessments many times, and to this day, I find that what ASHTO recommends is still pretty conservative in a location for the driver's eye. Typically, 10 feet back from the edge of traveled way, or 14 and a half feet from, no, not 14, less than, take five feet off of that, nine and a half feet roughly, would be a more approximate location. You can see it for yourself, anytime you make a left or a right turn from an unsignalized intersection, you are most likely 10 feet or back or so where your driver's eye will be, looking to a height of a vehicle that's about three and a half feet. Those are the ASHTO measurements and heights for intersection site distance. Early on in the process, we, the only reason we did the 10-foot back is because early on in the process, when we got some original information from the neighborhood group, they had done an assessment also with a 10-foot back setback, so to speak. So we just wanted to provide the same information. Now, one thing we did not do, and may have been oversight, who knows, we not, the town of Acton has its own guidelines for its own site distances. I was not aware of that initially, but I believe that the Acton requirements also are extremely conservative for requirements for site distance. And that information is outlined in one of the neighborhood group's letters. So that's a summary of where we are on the traffic. I think I've covered everything I need to cover, and I'll have a drink of water and leave it at that.
Thank you very much. Roland, any comments at this point before I open it up to the public?
You want to hear from the peer reviewer at this point?
Yeah, I'm going to open it up to the public and then we, you want to do the peer reviewer first?
I would do the peer reviewer first.
Okay.
It's my recommendation.
No questions right now.
Okay. Representative from Vaness?
Does it more sense to look at your neighbors?
Yeah, I think I'd rather hear the summary from the peer reviewer first and then open up for the public because I think we'll have a lot of comments.
Okay, thanks, no problem.
And I want to make sure we hear what Representative from Vaness has to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Jeffrey Dirk. I'm a partner with Vaness and Associates, and as you heard, we've been retained by the town to conduct a review of the materials that have been submitted in support of the project, and specifically the information that you heard Mr. Cramp go through. So as a part of the record, you should have two letters from us. The first is dated August 7th, and that was a review of the initial materials that were submitted. So it included the site plan. And really, with respect to the site plan, what we were looking at is just generally looking at where the location of the driveway was, internal circulation, width of the driveway, so just things relating to how the driveway interacts with School Street as well as internal circulation. And then the two documents that were prepared by Bayside, so the first was a March 13th site distance assessment, and the second was a traffic operational assessment, really looking at the traffic volumes associated with the project, as well as some specific requirements that were in the Acton zoning bylaws relating to separation of distances between intersections. So that was the first letter that we prepared. As a result of that letter, we generated comments, specifically with respect to clarifying the location of the driveway. And as you'd heard, Bayside mentioned, the initial letters that were submitted referred to Piper Lane, and the site distances were with respect to Piper Lane. So we had asked as a part of our comments on that original submission, that the applicant clarify exactly where the driveway was located and then provide to us some updated site distance assessments, which the applicant did provide in a letter dated September 4th, and that's some of the information that you heard presented here tonight. So just with respect to the project, you had seen some traffic volume projections for the project. We've reviewed those as well as the data that was collected, so the traffic volumes on School Street that you heard presented, as well as the travel speed measurements. We did find that those, the data was collected using appropriate methodologies. We are in agreement with the information in terms of the facts and figures that were presented here with respect to existing conditions on... presented here with respect to existing conditions on School Street. So what I had mentioned in the initial letter was just to try and put the project in context. You heard the applicant mention that School Street accommodates a little over 5,000, 5,300 vehicles per day. And then you heard the traffic volumes that this project is expected to generate. So what the applicant had provided in terms of information on increases in traffic is that the project is expected to produce about 200 additional vehicle trips on a daily basis. So that's the number that you would look at the project in relation to the 5,300 vehicles that are going by the site on School Street. So just for context, what we had said or stated in our letter is that it represents... The project represents about a 3% increase in traffic on the roadway network. So to put that number in context, if I measured traffic volumes on School Street Monday through Friday, what I would find is over the course of a week, the traffic volume is going to fluctuate by 10%. So difference between Monday volumes and Friday volumes, if I graphed it, what you'd see is you're going to have about a 10% variation on a daily basis over the course of the week. So the 3% increase that the project represents is within the typical daily fluctuation of traffic volumes on School Street. So from a traffic engineering perspective, when we look at that in terms of impacts, if the increase in traffic is within the normal daily fluctuation of traffic volumes, it's generally not going to have any significant impact in terms of increasing motorist delays or vehicle queuing. So from that respect, and again, looking at the zoning bylaw which would suggest, or the subdivision regulations would suggest, suggest that a traffic study or formal traffic study is not required, we do concur with that, and that's really the reasons, because the percent increase in traffic is within that normal fluctuation. So if the applicant did a formal traffic study, it would basically say, conditions before and after the project with respect to delays and vehicle queuing at intersections, you're not going to see any change. The numbers are relatively small. And again, the peak hour numbers are less than 20 vehicle trips during a peak hour, so over the course of an hour, it's one additional vehicle every three minutes. So again, that's not something that's going to be readily apparent. So really, the focus of our review and what the applicant has undertaken is really looking at the issue of safety at the access into the project site. And really, given the low traffic volume, that's really what the focus should be with respect to the project itself. So specifically looking at the sight distances, you heard Mr. Cram give a very detailed presentation on how we go about calculating sight distances at driveways. The critical sight distance that we're concerned about for safety is what he referred to as a stopping sight distance. So the stopping sight distance is the absolute minimum sight distance that you have to have to be able to react to an object that's within your traveled path. So you physically have to make a decision, if you're driving on the road, to perceive this object, whether it's a vehicle or, you know, you heard Mr. Cram mention, a small object about two feet in height. You need to be able to perceive that vehicle, apply the brakes, and then stop prior to striking that object. So that's the critical sight distance, and that's known as the stopping sight distance. And the stopping sight distance is... That distance is applied whether you're looking at approaching the roadway along School Street or whether I'm exiting the driveway and looking to the left or right. So that's the distance that you'd have to have as a minimum to have the intersection be safe. You also heard mention of intersection sight distance. The way the sight distances are measured are different. So the intersection sight distance, as you heard Mr. Cram talk about the fact that what we want to see is the vehicle or the driver positioned 14 and a half feet back from the edge of the traveled way in the site. And then you're sighting basically from that point, three and a half feet is what's assumed to be the driver's eye height, and you want to make sure that the driver approaching you at three and a half feet can also see you. So it's three and a half feet, the three and a half feet, it's a reciprocal type of sight line. And that's the intersection sight distance. That's how it's measured. However, the measurement has to at least be equal to the stopping sight distance measurement. And if you have that measurement, you're Mr. Cram's site from the ASHTO guidelines, then the intersection can be safe. So that's really the distance that we're concerned with, making sure that we achieve that minimum sight distance. So if we're looking in the direction of a vehicle or looking to and from the west from the site, so in this direction here at a motorist that's traveling in the eastbound direction, you need to have a minimum sight line recognizing the grade of School Street approaching the intersection of 235 feet. So if you can see a vehicle that's approaching you at 235 feet, then that would imply that if a vehicle, in the worst-case situation, if someone pulled out of this driveway and the vehicle stalled in the middle of the roadway at 235 feet, that would be a sufficient distance for me to see that vehicle, apply the brakes, and stop before hitting that vehicle. So that's the critical distance that's required. So based on our review of the plan that you see here, we do concur with the applicant that the sight line that's provided in this plan, and you see it on the red line here, is 241 feet, so it exceeds the 235 feet. The one thing I want to mention in terms of what you see in the plan here is you see this straight line that's drawn here. So basically, that straight line is if you took a string from the center between your eyes and you projected out to between the eyes of the driver that's there. That's what that line represents. But we all know that as we're looking, we don't have blinders on, so that our... We have peripheral vision. So the actual sight line is a cone. So if I was to draw the physical sight line, it would extend 20 degrees on either side of that line there. So I think that's very important because as we're talking about potential for objects within the sightline area to be able to obstruct the sight line, you don't see in a straight line. So if there's a pole that's right in front of my face here, I can still see it on either side of that. And in fact, if there's a moving object that's approaching me, I can really see that moving object because the frame of reference is much greater than a stationary object. So just because there is a single pole or a single tree or such, that doesn't mean that that presents an obstruction, even if it lines up exactly with the red line that you see there, because we see in that 20-degree cone. So I offer that by way of guidance so that as you see additional information that may be submitted, just because there is an object that interferes with that red line there, that doesn't mean it represents a continuous obstruction. That would mean that the motorist cannot see a vehicle that's approaching them on the roadway there. So I think that's important in terms of looking at the sight line here. The other important thing with respect to this sight line in particular is that it crosses what we call the infill area. So that's important as you're looking at it because that is an area where snow will be piled up. Certain roadside objects, things like that, end up being in that area there. So that has to be considered as you're thinking about what this sight line actually means. So in wintertime conditions, if you have a snow windrow, so a snow pile that's left there after the plow goes by, it will be within that infill area. And then depending also in terms of the canopy that exists there, whether that snow melts and how quickly it melts, all of those things have to be considered. So while we agree that the sight line that's provided exceeds what the absolute minimum requirement will be, again, 235 feet based on the 5.5% downgrade approaching the intersection and a 32 mile an hour approach speed, what we've suggested in our latest letter, which is the September 9th letter that you have, you can place reasonable conditions, and your counsel will advise you as to that. But one of those reasonable conditions we've suggested is that that sightline area there needs to be maintained clear of any obstructions at all times. And what we've described is that, again, we're looking at three and a half feet to three and a half feet. So we want to make sure that anything that exists in that area there, including snow windrows, would need to be kept clear so that you maintain that three and a half foot visibility clearance along that area there. So our suggestion would be, to the extent that you're inclined to act favorably on the application, that that needs to be one of the conditions. So the condition would basically be, the applicant has to show the sight triangles on the site plan, and I think they've done that. And then they actually add a note on the site plan, which again, I believe they've actually... That they've done this as well, that basically says, within that sight triangle area, the applicant's responsible for keeping that area clear, free of obstructions that would exceed, we've suggested, two and a half feet in height. That gives you a one-foot buffer, basically to allow for additional snow accumulation that may take place. So that's something that goes back on the applicant. It's noted on the site plan, so it becomes a condition of the approval and enforceable by the building commissioner as well because it's on there. So I think that's the critical thing with respect to this sight line here, and this is the critical sight line. If we look in the other direction, the curvature of the roadway, School Street, actually it's an S curve, as you're familiar in this area here. So the curve actually goes away from the site. That's a benefit from the standpoint of the driveway because as the curve bends away from the site, you actually have a longer sight line along School Street. So I think what you're saying from what the applicant had presented is they have about a 265-foot sight line there. And that's really because of the fact that the curve, as it goes away from the intersection, actually benefits the sight line because you can see further along the roadway itself. So based on our review, we've concluded that the minimum sight lines are met at this location, and that minimum sight line is the safe stopping sight distance. So from the standpoint of looking at accepted state and federal criteria for safe operations of an intersection, our conclusion is that the intersection meets those minimum requirements for safe operation. That being said, there are conditions we've suggested that should be placed on the site plan if you're inclined to act favorably on the application to ensure that this sight line in particular is maintained in a safe manner. And that's a condition that would be on the applicant to be able to... Or that they would be required to do that. So be happy to answer any questions you have now or after you've heard from the neighborhood.
Great. Thank you very much. I have one quick question.
Yes.
Was there anything that stood out that would have a negative impact on the project? Because I didn't hear you mention anything that was negative necessarily.
In terms of the project itself and its impacts or its design?
Might need a physical adjustment or an adjustment to the design or something. Seems like everything meets the minimum requirements.
It does. So the issue here really, as I mentioned, is so we've got a... The way the curvature of School Street works is to the east of the site. It's a benefit in terms of the location of the driveway, so if the driveway shifted easterly more, there's no detriment. However, going in the other direction, in terms of locating the driveway in an optimal position, you're pretty close to where the optimal position is. You can't move it... The further you move it to the west, your sight lines get worse. And then the condition that was described, which is, you know, our concern is the sightline either... The sightline triangle either needs to be on land controlled by the applicant or within the public right-of-way, whereupon the town can implement conditions relating to the project. If you move the driveway any further to the west, the sight line starts to cross private property. So that's beyond the control of the applicant. So I think from the standpoint of the limited frontage they have available, this is probably the best place to locate the driveway. And if you shifted it any more westerly, you'd lose the sight line and they would cross private property, so you'd start to get into issues. So from the standpoint of the project's design, I really think the driveway is where it needs to be to achieve the sight lines.
Okay, thank you. Scott, do you have any questions?
Not right now.
Okay.
No.
Nina, Roland?
I'm all set right now.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Kirk, if you don't mind. With regard to the placement of the car by the applicant's consultant within School Street, do you have any concerns as to where that car itself is placed as far as being an accurate measurement of sight lines?
I don't, no. I think that it's... I think that the placement is fine from the standpoint of both the placement of the vehicle with respect to into the site with the driveway as well as along School Street. No, I don't have a concern with that.
Okay, so that was my second question, which is, do you have any concerns with respect to where the applicant has measured the sight lines from the car coming out of the proposed project, the offset from the center line? Is the methodology that applicant used to establish that location appropriate as far as you were concerned?
Yeah, it's an accepted methodology to do that. The other methodology, or my check on it basically, is if you extend the curb line through the intersection or the edge of the traveled way, past the driveway through the intersection, and then go back 14 and a half feet, which is the requirement, where they've located the vehicle is consistent with where that location would actually be. Because what you want to basically have is the... If you're extending the edge of the pavement through the intersection, that's basically the edge of where the legal traveled way is essentially. That's where you should be measuring from. So looking at the way the applicant did it, as well as my check of that condition, you come up with basically the same measurements.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I have one more question. I have all the memos in front of me except the one from the 7th. Are there any other conditions that were in that memo or subsequent memos other than the one that you mentioned publicly?
No, our letter's actually dated September 9th.
Right.
And so that letter has the conditions, there's three conditions that we've asked that you consider. And again, each of these are important with respect to these sight lines. So even to the extent that, you know, we're talking about these plans here versus what's actually going on out in the field there, what we typically require or suggest that you include as a condition is that the applicant needs to submit a certified affidavit from a professional engineer. And that certified affidavit basically says that everything that's been presented to you and that I've reviewed that suggests that the sight lines are appropriate at this location, that once the driveway is physically constructed in the field before they start building any of the units there, a professional engineer's got to submit a certification back to the town that says the sight lines, both approaching and exiting this driveway, meet or exceed the 235 feet. And that until they do that, they cannot construct any of the units within the project site. Because again, you've relied upon the fact, and based on my review as well, that the sight lines will meet these minimum requirements. And so you really want that certification as well, especially given the fact that, you know, we've got a sight line across an infill area here. It will require potentially some trimming or pruning of vegetation, so it's better just to make sure when the driveway is physically constructed or roughed in there before they start building any units, they have a certification to you that they meet all of those requirements.
Thank you, and I did find the memo.
I have an additional one if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
I guess a very basic question. Is it your opinion that there's appropriate sight lines based on where the driveway is currently? And if that driveway were to move further as we're looking at the plan to the left, which I... That's the west, I understand, that there would not be appropriate sight lines for this project?
I would need to see how far that shift actually takes place. But again, as you're looking at this, we've basically got five... You've got a five-foot difference in terms of variation. So if there... Let's just say there are 240, there are 241, let's just call it 240. 235 is the minimum. So you can see how sensitive this is.
Okay.
So, you know, a minor shift of that driveway to the west could be something that the sight line actually drops below the 235 feet that's required there.
Okay.
So yeah, I mean, we're at a point here where, you know, I'm comfortable with it, but you're on the bubble. You know, and so you've got conditions that you can impose on the project that ensure that it's going to meet it or nothing gets built up there. But you're on the bubble. So anything that shifts that driveway, even a couple of feet, would need to be re-reviewed just because of that fact.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Roland.
Jeffrey, going in the other direction, moving that driveway further east, presumably that would extend the sight distance somewhat.
It would, yeah.
Would that... I don't know if you can answer that tonight, but would in your estimation change the need for or alter the conditions you're suggesting by increasing the sight distance in that fashion?
I don't believe so, and I wouldn't suggest that you would alter that, especially because of the fact, again, anytime you have a sight line that crosses an infill area where it's going to be subject to snow accumulation, you want to have these conditions in place. And I would still suggest that the certification's necessary. The only thing with respect to shifting the driveway to the east is now you need to deal with that separation between the driveway and Piper Road.
Right.
And, you know, there's a minimum separation that we want to achieve there as well.
Right.
They've got, you know, I think they've got about 30 to 35 feet before they start to get to a point where the sight distance between the two would cause an interaction between the driveways. So just again, we're pretty close to an optimal location.
Thank you.
Any other questions, also?
Fine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now what I'd like to do is open the meeting up to the public for comments, and if it'd be appropriate, Mr. Cahill, if we start with you, please. Please just remember to identify yourself.
Sure will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rob. My name is Dan Hill. I'm the attorney for the South Acton Neighborhood Association, as well as some of the neighbors. If it's okay with you, what I'd like to do is just ask a couple of questions of Mr. Durk through the board since they're fresh on my mind. And then I do have here Courtney Jones of Tetra Tech. She's the traffic engineer that provided the memo that we supplied to the board. She'd like to just summarize her findings and comments and answer any questions. So if I may, and thank you, Mr. Durk, for being here. I just... The one... The first question that popped to my mind is... I just, the one, the first question that popped to my mind is the issue of the placement of the car that's in the driveway, in Summit Drive. And, you know, from what I understand, the car was placed, or the driver's eye was placed 20 feet, measured back from the center of the traveled way. And my understanding is that Ashdod requires that the driver's eye be measured 14, 14 and a half feet back from the edge of the traveled way. So, Mr. Cram's memo says that he assumed that there was a 12-foot wide westbound travel lane on School Street. So, math is not my forte, but it strikes me that you don't have 14 and a half feet here. If you're measuring 20 feet back from the center line and you've got a 12-foot travel lane, don't you have eight feet left? And so, how are you, how are you at 14 and a half feet? Maybe Mr. Dirk can answer that.
26.5.
So, so what I did was, and you know, independent of the measurements that Mr. Cram did, I looked and scaled off of the plan, the 14 and a half feet back from the extension of the curb line or the edge of the traveled way through the intersection there. And that places the sight distance back, just roughly about 14 and a half feet. And again, it's an extension of the curb line through the intersection.
But, but that line is not in the plan, so I don't know how you, how do you confirm that it's 14 and a half feet when the edge of the travelway is actually not shown in this plan?
So, just to clarify, what you do is extend the edge of the pavement through the intersection. So, I'm connecting basically the points that a driver would actually drive as they're traveling through the intersection on the right-hand side and then measuring back.
That's not the road. That's not the road. That's not the road. That's 26.5.
Okay. I, I don't see how you measure that. And again, I just go back to what Mr. Cram said. He said it was measuring, maybe I can ask the question to Mr. Cram through the board, that how do you get to 14 and a half feet if you're, if you're saying you're measuring 20 feet from the center line and you're saying there's a 12-foot traveled lane? How do you get to 14 and a half feet?
I would be happy to address. We have the center line measured based on our survey. But the edge of the traveled way and the edge of the pavement are two different lines. So, what we did, because it's clearly undefined where the actual edge of traveled way is, we assumed a 12-foot wide travel lane, which is typical. Sometimes they're 11 feet, sometimes they're narrower. So, half of 12 is six. So, six feet off of the center line is that first line there. And then 20 feet back from that is where the driver's eye would be. Now, if you had an 11-foot lane, half of 11 is five and a half feet. So, that would give you the 14 and a half feet that Mr. Dirk has used.
I also wanted to ask Mr. Dirk if he, if he took a look at the east, east, looking east, stopping sight distance. The applicant represented that he has 265 feet of available stopping sight distance looking east. But the only plan that I've seen here is this plan that shows looking west, what the intersection sight distance is looking west. So, did you, how did you corroborate that 265 was actually available looking east?
So, I performed a site visit and measured the sightline looking in that direction as well. So, I actually pulled my car up on Piper Lane, got out, looked at the location where the driveway was, measured from the edge of the traveled way back 14 and a half feet, and looked in both directions to confirm that the measurements were within reasonable distance of what the applicant had represented.
Right. But I was talking about stopping sight distance, which is measured from the, from the actual road, not 14 and a half feet back, right?
I, I observed both. The sight distance along the roadway, which is the distance the vehicle actually travels, as well as the sight distance exiting from the project.
So, you, you actually measured this in the field?
Yes.
With like a tape, with a taper? How did you?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Okay. And it's 265 without crossing a property?
It's 260. Well, you don't, along school? So, the sight distance along School Street doesn't cross the property line, so the stopping sight distance approaching the intersection, which I think the first thing that you mentioned. So, that's the sightline along School Street. And then the sightline looking from the driveway out actually crosses existing Piper Lane and then proceeds out into School Street itself. Again, because it's curving away from you.
But in, so stopping sight distance in School Street does not have to cross 96 School Street in order to get the 265 feet?
The sightline along School Street?
Actually, can I, can I, can I pull up the, we have a slide on this.
Sure.
If you can't find it, we can move on to some other points you have and then come back to that later.
So, when I'm referring to the stopping sight distance looking east, this is a, an estimate that was taken just using aerial photography, because there wasn't a plan that showed it. And when, when looking at the aerial photograph and measuring it in this, in this way, it looks like we have around 200 feet. And that's a significant enough difference between 265 that we thought it would be important to have the applicant actually field measure this.
I mean, again, I would, which suggests is that the, the only thing I would offer with respect to this, because I, I think I've seen this, is this was a submission that you had made last week, on Thursday or Friday? So, as we're looking at that sightline, again, if you're looking at the driver, they're not looking, so the straight line you've got shown there is, is fine. But again, the driver sees 20 degrees on either side of that straight line. So, even if a portion of that straight line goes across the property, not all of the sightline goes across the property. So, if, if everything to the south, or the bottom of that sightline, was a continuous obstruction such as a fence, that doesn't mean that everything to the north of it, I can't see. I can still see along that.
No, no, we're saying that this is a, this is the right sightline. We're saying that this is what they actually have, using it, doing it the right way.
Right.
Is around 200 feet, which, but they're saying they have 265. So, in order to get 265, I, I find that incredible, because I think in order to get 265, you'd have to cross even further into that house lot.
So, you're moving the vehicle further down the roadway itself. So, the sightline that you see there, the, the distance the vehicle has to actually travel along the roadway, I believe is going to be at least 208 feet, which is the minimum, based on the grade that's there. And your sightline along that triangle that's, that you're showing there, again, you can see within that cone of vision. So, you at least have the 208 feet, which is the minimum that's required for safety, based on the 3.3% grade that you've got there.
So, I'm, I'm going to suggest, I'm going to take note that there's disagreement in how the sightline was calculated and asked to move on.
Okay.
Can I just say, the first is here. Um, thank you.
I'm sorry.
All distances that Mr. Cram and Mr. Dirk had mentioned tonight, that they have come up with their conclusions, are based on survey distances, on the ground survey. The, and I really would have rather hear first from the Tetra expert than Mr. Hill, you know?
We'll hear from him.
Okay. And I hope that she'll speak next. But just remember that what you have here is estimated sight distances. And in the Tetra report, it says we base these on aerial views and things like that. So, the only way you can measure sight distance, and if you want to ask Mr. Dirk this question now, in real sight distance, on the ground survey.
Yeah. Point taken. I don't think we have to ask it, if you mentioned.
Okay. Right.
Yeah. And I actually wholeheartedly agree. And the problem is, we don't have one here. I don't understand why a survey plan wasn't shown for the looking east sight distance. All that was provided was looking west. I don't understand why those plans were provided. And I think that's a major admission. And then my last question for Mr. Dirk, and then I'll, I'll hand it back over to Ms. Jones, is Mr. Dirk stated in his comment letter that Piper Lane, as opposed to Piper Road, Piper Lane was going to be closed. And, and I assume that's why he didn't raise at the point that the proposed new driveway location actually overlaps with Piper Lane to about 50% of the frontage on, on School Street. And there was absolutely no discussion in the Bayside report about how that's going to work. Typically, you'd want to seek some kind of explanation for how you're going to consolidate those two, those two roads, and whether or not the project even has the legal right to overlap on a Piper Lane. So, I'm just wondering for Mr. Dirk, how he knew this was going to be closed? What information was he using? And on what basis can he say that Piper Lane is going to be closed? Because as far as I know, there's people with pertinent rights to Piper Lane that have not, have not consented to that.
So, I, I hesitate to say logic, but you could not build this driveway without closing Piper Lane. So, I mean, it may be a misconception on my part, however, you couldn't build this project with Piper Lane remaining open. So, the legal, the legal ease as to how that happens, I think is a separate discussion in terms of rights and everything on that. But I will state for the record that if you, you need to, either Piper Lane needs to be reconfigured to intersect into this project, or it's eliminated, you can't have both. They can't operate together.
Thank you.
For the record, Courtney Jones from Tetra Tech. And we are working with Hill Law on behalf of the South Acton Neighborhood Association. So, definitely appreciate a lot of the effort that's gone in from all the parties involved, all the consultants, to look at the sight distance. I'll try not to reiterate everything that's already been said. I'll just kind of give a quick rundown.
Thank you.
It is just our opinion that we don't feel that the applicant has demonstrated a driveway location that satisfies not just the industry standard set forth in Ashdod, but also the town standards and the subdivision rules and regulations. The reasons for that, I'll just, again, quickly reiterate, since they've already kind of been discussed. But we have concerns that the placement of the vehicle approaching from the west on School Street was placed in an advantageous location. When we were out there, we observed motorists driving much closer to the center line of the roadway. And if you did that, you can actually see it on the aerial here. I don't know if this has a pointer. But here is where we observed most vehicles driving along this portion where Bayside Engineering's vehicle traveling eastbound is located. However, the measurement for sight distance to or from the west was with the vehicle close, placed a lot closer to the edge of the roadway. So, if you look, if you took a motorist point of view from about here, just slightly offset from the center line, you're starting to really potentially encroach, the sightline encroaching on the private property line. So, we would just recommend that the sight distance plans and profiles to and from the west, we'd recommend they be redone with the placement of the vehicle closer to the center line of the roadway. As Mr. Hill mentioned, the placement of the vehicle along the site driveway, attempting to exit the driveway, we'd recommend that Bayside just delineate the curb, the assumed curb line, because the issue is that coming from the east, I don't have his plan up here, obviously, but coming from the east, the curb line is much closer to the center line of the road than over here. So, when you delineate the edge of the roadway, there could be potentially an issue, particularly to or from the east. Ashdod guidance is that for stopping sight distance, you can see everything within the whole travel path. So, that's why on this graphic here, you can see we're taking the point to the center line of the roadway. So, that's why we're concerned that there may not be enough sight distance to or from the east for a vehicle to safely stop if they have to see a point closer to the center line. When we looked at the plans from the town, which, Dan, I don't know what year they were from, but they were pretty old, so we'd recommend that the applicant verify the latest property plans. The right-of-way looked very, very close to the edge of pavement. So, that's why we're concerned that any additional distance needed for, for the stopping sight distance or intersection sight distance along this travel path would encroach along the private property line, which they wouldn't have any rights to maintain a clear sight line through that path. So, those, plus a few of the other things that I've already mentioned a few minutes ago, are the reasons why we just feel more work, particularly sight distance plans and profiles for to or from the east and revised sight distance plans and profiles to or from the west are appropriate and needed. Do you have any questions for me?
I do not.
I don't, no.
Roland?
Can, can one of, maybe, maybe Jeff, since you're the peer reviewer on behalf of the town, could you explain for all of us again, how, from which point to which point in the road, in this case, School Street, the stopping sight distance should be measured? So, I, I listened to it earlier, but now I'm like confused.
No, understood. So, not to digress too far. So, there's two, two sight distances we're measuring. The first is the sightline along School Street. So, this is the, the worst case, the car pulls out of the driveway, it stalls in the middle of the road.
Right.
In School Street. You're driving along School Street. You don't care about the development. You just need to know, is there something in my way that I need to react to? So, that sightline is from the driver driving along School Street, and they're looking to a two-foot object that is within the traveled way that you would need to react to.
Can you, can you point to that in, on this?
So, if we're just, so just using this exhibit here, so if, if this is the location where the driveway is, so I need to be able to see a two-foot object that is within my traveled path as I'm driving. So, if I'm driving westbound, so from the east, traveling to the west, as I'm coming around this curve where the location of the driveway is, I need to see a two-foot object that's within the traveled way that I would need to react to. So, as I'm coming around the curve and I'm looking, I'm sighting along the roadway at all positions as I travel along the path there. So, it's along the roadway. So, but the only thing I want to add to all this is, you know, you saw graphs and charts and calculations. So, now we need to bring this back to taking that and now applying it to the realistic portion of the driving task in the roadway itself. We're not looking at a point on the roadway, or a stick on the roadway, or straight lines like you see here. Again, we're looking at a moving object and a physical object. So, when you're thinking about a car, if I position the car on the center line, on the shoulder, whatever, that car still, it's a, it's a six to eight-foot wide vehicle that's sitting within a 11 to 12-foot wide traveled way. That's the object. It's not a point. So, we, we have to think practically as well as we're looking at this. So, I can take a sightline and as, as you heard mentioned, whether it's a Bayside sightline that goes to the center line of the traveled way, or it's a sightline that's provided by Tetra Tech that goes to the middle of the traveled way, I'm looking at a vehicle. The vehicle is not a physical, just a point. It's a wide object, you know? So, again, all of these charts and calculations or everything, they're important, because that's how we are. that's how we arrive at these distances. But we have to think about a practical perspective of what are we looking at? We're looking at a vehicle that's in the roadway, or we're looking at a two-foot object that's physically in the roadway. It's not a point, and we don't see along straight lines. Measurements may be taken along straight lines, but that's not what we see, and objects are much wider than a point. So I think, just to kinda bring it to reality, so, yes, we're sighting to a two-foot object that exists along School Street. It's in my traveled way. I have to react to it. If there's a two-foot object that's sitting at the center line, I don't have to react to that object, because I'm not driving on the center line. The object has to be in the traveled path where I need to make a decision. I'm either going to stop, or I'm gonna drive over the object, or I'm going around the object. That's what we're sighting to. So again, whether this sightline here, we're showing it going to the center line, if that object is over here in my traveled path, so it's in the traveled path where I physically have to react to it, the sightline is longer. So again, there's variations in how we're looking at this, but we have to be practical.
So what about that ball that was mentioned earlier that a kid might follow?
Yeah.
Can you speak to that?
Yeah, so if that ball is in my traveled path that's here, if a child is coming from the curb line, so if I'm measuring to the curb line, you can see my sightline is actually longer, and it has nothing to do with that. So it's all with respect to where that sightline is placed within the roadway. It's gonna be the shorter distance if I place it at the center line, it's gonna be a longer distance in this case if I place it at the curb line. So you're looking at the variation on it. And I think the key thing is, within that variation that happens, is it at least equal to 208 feet, which is the minimum? And I'm suggesting that it's 208 feet within that variation between the center line and where the curb line is.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead. It's Courtney, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I had to use this camera.
Did yours belong to an on-ground survey?
We did do an on-
If you're gonna talk, I need a microphone.
I'll be with the chairman.
The portable's right behind you.
Again, I apologize. Did you have a survey crew out here to do an on-the-ground survey?
Well, when traffic consultants typically go out, we don't usually measure in the field with survey equipment, like when you're thinking of, you know, actual survey-
That's what I meant.
...equipment. No.
Okay.
And-
That's fine, that's fine. I just walked it out.
But I don't-
Go ahead, no, finish. Go ahead.
Yes, but I don't believe, Jeff, you didn't use actual survey equipment either. That's the typical method, is that you go out and you wheel it off, just to get in a rough idea. So what all this graphic is trying to portray is that it's close. So that's why we would recommend that to the board, that the sight distance plan and profile be provided to or from the east, particularly so a survey can be, you know, the survey with the actual accurate property lines and everything.
Bruce, can you, you've done a survey in the east of Lee direction?
We have.
Can we, Mr. Chairman? We're happy, we've done an actual survey that's consistent with the distances that Mr. Dirk and Mr. Cram say is adequate. We'll be happy to submit it to the town. It's actual on-the-ground survey. The, you can see up here that it says proposed driveway approximately 46 east of Utility Hall. Do you agree with that, Bruce? Is the right distance?
I would agree that's the right distance. Where they have the line drawn here is not a representation of where the driveway is. It would be more in the vicinity of over here for the position of the driveway. As you can see, then you're looking at a much greater distance as you go down across in a straight line.
So this is not a hanging participle, so it's to say. We'll be happy to submit the survey, the actual on-the-ground survey from the actual driveway location on School Street and the sight distance to Mr. Dirk. This is a little bit circular, because this sight distance was well in excess of what was needed, but we're happy to submit it. It's kind of, I think you could take it from the plans if you wanted to, but we're happy to submit it. Bruce?
That's correct. We have-
Hold on, please.
We've done the survey well up in this direction to the west on School Street, and well to the east on School Street, down around the corner. And we've done sight distances with instruments on the corner that everybody's referring to, an actual transit and a rod, stadia rod, which has now got a prism on it. And we've done wheel and tape distances as well.
Okay, thank you. What I'd ask is, as you've offered, any documentation, please submit them to the town, so they could be made available on DocuShare for anyone in the public to access. Now I'd like to go back to the podium.
William, what, it seems like he's running the meeting.
I'm sorry, Tara, you weren't recognized. I'm running the meeting, and now we're moving forward, so if you could please wait your turn until you're recognized.
No, it's a point of order I wanted to ask, because he was seeming to be talking. There's a performance art thing going on, and he was, I'd like him to work you into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Courtney, were you finished?
I won't say unless anyone has a question.
Okay. Any questions?
Nope.
Any questions?
I apologize, I do have one question. Looking at this, do you disagree with Mr. Dirk's description of the, I think it was a 20-degree cone of vision he talked about with the sightlines?
I'm not familiar with that being written in Ashdod relative to sight distance, but it's something that I could look into. I mean, he is correct, you're not like just looking straight line. So it is common industry practice that if you have, you know, an object that's obstructing your sightline, that it kind of comes down to engineering judgment about, could you kind of, if you moved your head very slightly, could you see around it? But relative to an exact cone of vision, I'd have to look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Just one second, please. Before I recognize Mr. Cahill, just so we don't have a handful of people monopolizing the podium, is there anybody else from the public who would like to make a comment before we go back to Mr. Cahill? Unless it's, unless Mr. Cahill, do you have any comment? One more comment you wanna make relative to this before we move on?
Yeah, I actually had emailed Roland earlier that we actually have a presentation, and, you know, Gene's part of it. Everyone just raised their hand as part of the presentation. So we actually have an organized way of doing this. I have a few more comments to make than Gene, I believe, is gonna speak to a few other things, and he has some slides to show as well.
Okay.
And there may be other people, too.
Okay. Excuse me, one more.
No, I just before we go, I apologize, I should say.
Okay.
So I wanted to just address Mr. Dirk's comment about the desire not to have a rigid formula for sight distance, and I totally appreciate that as a human being. I mean, it doesn't make sense, but for better or worse, we have this legal standard that's called Ashdod, and that is the standard by which the applicant is suggested they're meeting sight distances. And so we're only insisting upon that if the applicant is gonna say, I'm meeting sight distance, and these are my figures, that we're gonna put them to the test of that. And we're gonna say, if you're gonna do that, then you're gonna apply the rigid standards of Ashdod. I think that's only fair. The applicant said he has 265 feet of sight distance looking east. We raised that question. We don't believe it, and we heard tonight that they're gonna produce a survey that's gonna back that up. And that's all we asked for. We're not, this plane was not intended to be a field survey. It was merely to show that based upon this aerial, it looked like it was 203 feet, which is a lot different from 265 feet. That was the only point. There's been no discussion this evening about the town standards. The town does have sight distance standards in its subdivision rules and regs. Those have been requested to be waived, and I just wanna make the point that they're out there, and this project doesn't comply with any of them. With respect to intersection sight distance, just to summarize, we question the location of the 14-and-a-half feet back. We would appreciate if there's gonna be a plan presented, that that plan show where that 14-and-a-half feet was measured from, because it's very unclear from the diagram that was provided where that line is. And I credit the explanation that was given, and I appreciate that. But again, I'm a visual kind of person, I think most of us are, and I think we need to see where that is. Just quickly on Ashdod, Ashdod is actually accepted by the Housing Appeals Committee under 40B as a measure of safety. In fact, there was a decision in 2005 out of the Town of Groton, where the Housing Appeals Committee, which, as you may be aware, very rarely rules in favor of municipalities, actually held in that case that failure to meet the minimum stopping sight distance was a safety factor that outweighed the need for housing in that particular project. So if there is a deficient stopping sight distance in this case, that could very well be a ground for denial of this project. So that is why this is so important. With respect to the overlap on Piper Lane, I personally found Mr. Dirk's answer unsatisfactory. I don't understand why a peer reviewer report would say Piper Lane is gonna be closed, and therefore there's no comments about the fact that we've got two roads overlapping each other. To me, that's totally not, I think that needs to be addressed. I think the applicant needs to address it. And more importantly, I think the applicant needs to explain to the board what legal rights it has to actually occupy Piper Lane with its project driveway. Now, I understand, and again, I'm not being rigid, I guess the theme of tonight is flexibility. And I understand that Piper Lane is not a heavily trafficked road, but it could be in the future. People have rights to that road. This hill is a very, is a large land area. There are people with big properties. Someday, somebody might wanna develop those properties, and they may wanna use Piper Lane. So it's important for, as a planning function, that the town understand who has rights in Piper Lane, and does this applicant have the right to occupy Piper Lane as it's proposing on the current plan? There's such things as pertinent rights to easements, and I'm not gonna get into a treatise on that tonight. Mr. Levine knows the law very well. So I think that should be something that Mr. Levine can provide to the board by the next hearing, and I think that's an appropriate request. Another thing that we wanted to mention about traffic safety and roadway design is the offsets. This project is on a collector street. It's not a local street. School Street is a collector street, given the definition in the town's rules and regulations. A collector street is defined as a street that accommodates between 2,000 and 8,000 daily trips. You've heard Mr. Cram testify that he counted 5,000, roughly 5,000 average daily trips. Where you have a collector street and an intersecting local street, the required offset is 1,000 feet. Now, we can agree to disagree over whether that's the appropriate number or not, but that is the number in the town's regulations. Under Ashdod, I believe, the minimum standard is what the sight distance would be. And in this case, it would be 210 feet or 208 feet. Either way, it doesn't comply with the offset requirements. With respect to the roadway design, I'm gonna briefly mention the concern that we have, which I think will probably be addressed more in the next meeting, but it's still a traffic issue. This proposed road travels a very steep grade up the hill, past my client's property on the left, and other folks on the right, is a pinch point. And in that pinch point, there's gonna be two massive retaining walls. On the one on the left, about 14-and-a-half feet tall. To dig that retaining wall is gonna require excavation around five or six feet from the property line of my client's property on the left. Excavation's gonna go as far as 20 feet deep. So we would appreciate the board to ask the applicant to address the specifics on that, and specifically, you know, how is this going to work? How are we gonna be able to construct a retaining wall of that depth and size so close to the property line?
So point taken there, and I'm gonna ask you not to elaborate on that. We'll discuss that at the next meeting.
Okay, I just wanted to raise it so that we could perhaps get some information the next meeting. And then with respect to, again, the roadway of the project, we raised in our letter what appears to be a nonconformity with the state fire code. There should be a turnaround at the end of the road. There's, from what I can tell, no turnaround whatsoever. And I don't, I'm not sure what the explanation for that would be, if that's compliant in some way that I'm not aware of. But we think the state fire code is pretty clear that the dead end of that length requires an emergency turnaround. So in summary, our asks for tonight, some of which I think have been agreed to by the applicant, include providing a sight distance plan for the east, looking east, the west, you know, the westbound traffic. We think there should be that distance shown on a plan. It sounds like that's gonna be provided at the next hearing. There should be an explanation as to the rights on Piper Lane, and how these two roads overlapping each other is gonna work physically in the field. We think there should be a submittal of a detailed plan for the retaining walls, which I just briefly mentioned. We think there should be a construction management plan explaining how this road will be constructed with all the export of earth materials and getting so close to the property lines. And then finally, an explanation of how the road complies in the state fire code with respect to the dead end. And with that, I'll pass the baton off to my clients. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Can-
Hold on one second. No, you're not recognized. Please, sit down.
Okay. Can you help me identify which one is your stick, so you can take that out and put his stick in?
Oh, yours is it, then. Okay. I didn't wanna, oh, I don't know which one, which. I did, I don't have two. I'll let you. Right. Thanks. I'll hold on. Right. Did you have a copy?
Mr. Chairman, I'm Dr. Gene Bresson of AD School Street Acton, and I say doctor because I don't have a resume in life safety, but I have four years of medical experience at Massachusetts General Hospital, and felt that it would probably be best if I addressed the safety issues. Now, some of our slides are gonna be redundant, so I'll just zip through them, so I won't take up the time for discussion and other input, since I know you care about neighborhood concerns. There's the, okay. So this is the overview. So I just wanna begin by stating that, which clicker?
Point at the screen?
I'm trying.
It worked before.
It works. Okay, maybe. Yeah? One, two, three. Doesn't seem to be working. Would you like to forward it for me? To somebody? You're the engineer. You can show me how to do these problems. All right.
No, you push the button.
Annual work.
Push the button.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Bruce. Who we are. SANA, the South Acton Neighborhood Association, is a group of citizens dedicated to preserving and protecting South Acton neighborhood and Acton itself through responsible participation in the democratic process to ensure transparency and accountability where development projects pose untenable risks. I'm pushing. Oh, there we go. Our understanding of this public hearing is that it provides the ZBA an opportunity to fill its obligation to consider and determine whether the need for affordable housing outweighs local concerns. Okay. What we care about, and we're only gonna address life safety, but just to give you a view. Life safety, historic district integrity, design that preserves neighborhood character, consistent interpretation of zoning bylaws, environmental stewardship, and a balance of affordable housing and local concerns. Okay. How we do this? By participating with town government regarding development projects that impact South Acton neighborhood, and specifically, and more generally, the town of Acton, while at the same time keeping our fellow citizens informed. Okay, so to fulfill this mission, SANA will advance its opposition to Fort Piper Lane project with a comprehensive presentation, including data, facts, evidence, and expert testimony, and I might add, personal experience. I've been in my home for 35 years, and many of the folks here have been here longer, over the course of the ZBA hearings. So we'll address the topics that I just did, but tonight it'll just be life safety. Okay. At least 700 individuals have indicated their opposition to or serious concern with the project. This includes all the town boards and committees. The Board of Select voted unanimously on August 5th, 2019, to continue their opposition to this development. For this particular project, we will make it abundantly clear that the local concerns far outweigh the need for seven units of affordable housing. Okay. And the next PowerPoint is the traffic and safety.
Are your presentations, have they been submitted to the town?
No, we just finished it tonight. You will get it tonight.
Okay. I don't know who makes sure.
And what we'll do is we'll send them, if you'd like, we can send them as a PDF, if that would be easier to post. We'll convert the PowerPoints. We're doing each one separately.
I would suggest after the meeting, speak with Vivian.
Okay.
And she can point you to the right contact and make sure that it's presented in a proper format.
Everything will be submitted.
Thank you.
Nope, that's the first one. The second one. Wait, no, it's the one that's at...
That one. No.
It's the one at the bottom, I think.
The one at the bottom.
One of both?
Can you go back to the... No, which one is Michaela? The last one? Okay.
That? That doesn't work.
Wait a second. Okay, life safety issues. Life safety is the most important issue. Life safety standards are not met according to both Bayside and Tractech reports. SANA and the town boards and committees have serious concerns about safety. No waivers are acceptable where life safety is concerned. Let me elaborate a little bit on this. The standards have been minimally met. I live, I almost got hit coming out of my driveway tonight to come to this meeting. I said, wouldn't that be fortuitous if, unfortunate? I've had two dogs hit. My two-year-old granddaughter is two feet high. We typically will cross School Street. The police have often sat in my driveway with permission to catch speeders that zip around those curves. So that's just a little bit of experiential evidence. They're not facts. It's just personal evidence of me and of many of the folks who live and drive around School Street all the time. It's treacherous. The next slide, Dan?
So I just need a quick clarification when you're saying life safety standards, so those are the life safety standards?
We will...
Is that adopted by SANA?
No. We will provide data to show that Ashto fails, as well as the local standards for the town of Acton. I mean, as much as possible, we stuck to the facts and the evidence as we read them. And I must say, I want to say that all of us who have contributed to this have been through the first Bayside report, the first letter of Van Ness, the second Bayside report...
That's fine, okay, I just need to clarify...
We reviewed every document.
I just needed you to clarify what you were talking about when you say life safety.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So here's a drawing that you've seen before. Next slide, Dan? Okay. So, the diagram has been distorted to obtain a predetermined result. So the vehicle heading east on School Street is depicted at the edge of the right of way, hugging the guardrail rather than the center line. And I know that there's a quote cone, but when we went through Ashto, there's no, as Courtney mentioned, there's no wording of a cone. I think of a small object like a ball. The sight line ends at the passenger's dashboard rather than the driver's eye. And I understand this is a six-foot road, but what Mr. Kirk said is there's wiggle room. But if they're just meeting the minimal standards, and it's a matter of my granddaughter chasing a ball into the street, I'm not a fan of minimal standards. Okay? So the sight line is drawn at a utility pole, and I was walking down, you can't see beyond through that pole. The sight line crosses a rock outcropping which is not under control of the applicant. And if you go back to that picture, it crosses a rock, if I have a flasher here. You can see it does cross over the O'Briens' property where there's a rock outcropping and vegetation. And I would, I think...
Can you identify where you're talking about more specifically?
Right up there, if you go left above the sidewalk, that's private property, that's the O'Brien's property, and there's a rock outcropping and there's vegetation. Okay? And if there's wiggle room of one or two or three feet, we don't want to, we don't want to live with one or two or three feet when it comes to life and death. I mean, that's just not the way things work. We have minimal standards, we have ideal standards, and in my view as a physician, you always opt for ideal standards. Nobody would want to come to the Mass General Emergency Room and say, well, we did the minimal. But that's okay, because it's safe. And I guess in a court of law, if they did do the minimal procedures, if they did do the minimal test and workup, it would probably pass muster. But no one here would want minimal standards of a physician in an emergency room in a situation of life or death. No one. Next, please. Okay. This has been stated. We'd love to see the sight lines east. We don't believe they pass muster. And again, according to Dan, regs are regs. Ashto doesn't say around the curve of the road. It says between two points, however they're measured. So we either use Ashto standards, or we say, well, we're going to go around the curve of the road this time because it gives us a little bit more wiggle room. That's not the way regulations work. This is a, you can skip that. That's a, it's an observer, how sight distances are measured. So, the distance from Piper Road to Summit Drive is 181 feet. The Acton zoning bylaws require a minimum distance between local and collector streets of 1,000 feet, 800 feet short. And there's a reason for our local standards. I mean, I know Ashto is the national standard, but, you know, I assume that the folks who wrote our local standards took the community of Acton into account and that the fact that the road's curved and there are graves and there are reasons for this. Now, as the Van Ness peer review quoting the Mass Highway Project Development Design Guide, quote, "At a minimum, the separation between intersections should equal the SSD for the design speed of the major roadway." The SSD from east is 208 feet. The SSD from the west is 234, based on 32 miles per hour. At a minimum, the distance between Piper Road and the proposed Summit Drive should be 208 feet, so it's 27 feet short. The design is not safe and it fails Ashto and local standards. So as I've said, life safety should never be compromised by waivers. We have sight line distance measurements. The sight line set by subdivision regs are 305 feet, 275 feet for a common drive, and intersection distance of 1,000 feet. Those are the local standards. Acton subdivision regulations require SSD depending on the speed and grade of the road. So for School Street, over 30 mile an hour with a 3.5% grade, which is half of what the applicant has said, it's adding over 10 feet. So that would require 285 feet for SSD. So again, we're not so sure that these measurements are accurate, or fail. And the ideal, as I said, the ideal minimum should be used, not minimum distances. By the way, I use as an example Anthem Village, which was approved and built, exceeded minimum sight lines by 40 to 150 feet. That's reasonable. I can live with that. So, next? Okay. This is actually in a book. This has been a poster that's actually been around for quite a long time. You can see that the car is not a very modern car. Sight stopping distances have been around for a very long time. And this car, which was, this poster, which comes from the 1950s, was made folks acutely aware of how important they are. Dangerous single egress and entry. So there's only one way in and out. The road, Summit Drive, as it is depicted now, is 1,050 feet. Acton prohibits a greater length, a length greater than 500 feet. So we're extremely constrained, especially with the proposed deep highway abutments. So when snow is present and they're shovel it with a back, with some kind of a vehicle, let's say we get three feet of snow, that, that's what Mr. Durk was worried about.
Dirk or Kirk?
Dirk, okay. So, and how are they going to get it out of the ravine? Engineering, our engineering expert will address the issue of snow removal and stormwater drainage. There's another issue here, which I am not qualified to go, but the engineering folks will. And that's the thing called a K-value. I'm learning a lot in this enterprise here. A K-value, or K-values, which is the vertical curve, that's, as I understand it, that's a measurement that is how much sight you need when you're going over a curve and looking down on Summit Drive. To quote the Planning Board, "K-values are significantly below the minimal standard set forth in Acton subdivision rules and regulations." And according to the Planning Board, it's even more significant closer to School Street where K equals 13.44 and minimal standards is 20 for local streets. Now, I'll let the engineers explain what that means, because I can't. Okay. So, here's Sparky. Sparky's been around since the 50s as well. Every second counts. There's only one way, what Sparky wanted, two ways in and out. And as a physician, I can tell you, if someone has a heart attack, but there's a fire, it takes four seconds without oxygen for brain tissue to die. So we want to be real sure that, for medical reasons, that someone can get in and out in the case of an emergency and up to the top of Summit Drive within four minutes. Okay? Or less. By the state fire code, turnaround should be located at the end of the drive and accommodate at least two vehicles. Now, first responders, and I've asked a few, they said more than one vehicle. I mean, the plans that we've looked, that Mr. Ringwald has provided, show one turnaround for one vehicle. But as in, typically, when the fire alarm comes, I see a couple of fire trucks, usually one or two police cars, and an ambulance. Sometimes less, but, for example, when 90 School Street burned down on New Year's Day, five vehicles were there. In emergencies, every second counts. At an hour view, a turnaround for one vehicle is woefully inadequate. Travel on School Street. It's already a high-risk area of potential danger to pedestrians, cyclists, drivers, and pets, along with the serpentine section of School Street. Typical driver behavior involves exceeding the speed limit, failure to stop at Piper Road and School Street, crossing the center line to avoid cyclists and stopping delivery trucks. And this is why our police force have frequently sat at the end of my driveway, because that's exactly where they're zipping around, way, way in excess of 25 miles an hour. School Street is heavily traveled by cyclists and bicycle training groups, often at least six to eight experienced riders, riding two abreast, wing around the blind curb, speeding the limit as they drive downhill. So what I'm trying to get at here is, Ashto is great, but let's stick to the regs. Minimum is no good. But let's also be realistic. This is a heavily trafficked road. People speed, people cross this road. You've all driven on School Street. You know what I'm talking about. You can imagine coming down my driveway or my square or the O'Briens' driveway. You take your life in your hands, okay? A steel, and there's a steel, by the way, on the south side, there's a steel guardrail on the south side of budding property. There's no shoulder a place for refuge for cyclists or for pedestrians who have to jump out of the way of a car. Okay. So, how safe? We've heard that the applicant say that, well, a school bus can stop there. It's not in the plan, so this is not evidence-based. But can you imagine, in this place that I've just described, a school bus stopping in this vicinity and schoolchildren walking to or from this development, either in, from the development or from the neighborhood? No parking signs and pavement strip, and pavement striping on the ground, as the proposed Summit Drive has done, may not prevent vehicles from blocking the single emergency vehicle turnaround. And I might add that the police are not responsible to monitor the behavior on Summit Drive. This is a private condominium. They have no control. So, and additionally, speed limit and speed monitoring signs on School Street may not prevent vehicles from exceeding the speed limit. How many folks have driven up Taylor Road? Lights flash. When I go there, most people just zip right through. They're not going 25, they go on 30 or 40. Snow may not be properly removed, which I've mentioned before. So, for all of these reasons, I mean, being a realist, being a realist, which we have to be in this, no amount of mitigation can rectify what we believe is a fundamentally flawed design. It's unbuildable. So our conclusion is that the ZBA should not grant waivers for any project that threatens the lives of our current or future residents, the ones who may be living in the proposed condominium complex, or those of us who live, wander near School Street. And for the stated threats to life safety posed by the proposal, the ZBA should deny the applicant comprehensive permit. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them or I can open it up.
I don't have any. I would just remind you, please, at the end of the session, connect with Vivian and make sure the documents are uploaded so they can be put on DocuShare and accessible to all the residents of the town. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes. Please come up to the podium and identify yourself.
My name's Laura Brock. I live at the other end of School Street, where we also have a big curve with a big white farmhouse. And I need to say, one of the reasons I came here is we have such terrible traffic, we all find other ways around trying to get, we're on the wrong side of the tracks. I say we're on the wrong side of Route 2. We have backups. I go east on Route 2 to get to the north in the evening. I mean, it's ridiculous to go around that rotary if you don't have to. So here's the deal. We, I go west every morning on School Street. I go around this big curve and the people coming east are speeding and they're crossing the line. I was saying this to my neighbor who was nice enough to drive me, and she goes, yeah, it's like more than half of them. So that car's in the wrong place. The car that has been, it's in the wrong place. That's not where they come. And overall, the traffic in South Acton has gotten worse and worse. So I know this traffic study was done, what, last October? A year ago? I'm not sure it's accurate anymore. I'm just saying, it's getting really bad. It's getting worse. And why the cyclists want to come here, I don't know, but they are all over the place and they're not all experienced. Many of them are inexperienced. So you just need to be, the cat's out of the bag, but let's not make it worse. I have nothing against this development. I have nothing, I mean, but that's a terrible curve. And it's just really dangerous. That's, that's it.
Thank you.
Take it on 105 School Street concerning a comment from Mr. Cram. Did you say that you didn't know Acton had local standards for sight distance?
I'm sorry, I'm a private...
Okay. So what I would ask for, that the chair asks the applicant, and also, let me just back up. Ashto has two standards, correct? It has minimums and it has recommended. Is that right? Has minimum sight line standards and has a recommended sight line standard?
Well, no, it has one. And if you're above it or you're close to it...
No, it mentions ideal standards and minimum standards. There's two different numbers in Ashto.
I'll have to look into that.
Well, my point is that, given that the town has their standards and given that there is an Ashto recommended standards court, I believe our traffic engineer could probably confirm that, I asked that the chair asked the applicant to please put all those numbers in your table to show the ideal, the Acton one, and the minimum one. Because I want the ZBA to see how deficient the minimum standard is. It's, I believe the minimum, I believe the number that works out for Acton is 305 feet. So, looking west, you're 70 feet short. I mean, that's, that to me is appalling. And as Jean pointed out, Anthem Village, which is a 40 beyond Martin Street, 28 units, they exceeded all the minimums by 40 to 150 feet. So, I, you know, I can't emphasize enough, minimums are unacceptable. I've been in the architectural profession for more than 40 years, and we have a minimal situation, looking at codes. I spent my whole life reading codes, crunching numbers. So, I'll give you an example. If I calculate the Arkham City load on a building and it tells me to have X amount of doors or exits, and the number comes out, when you crunch the numbers to 4.5, what do you do as a professional? Do you go to four or do you go to five? You always err on the side of caution. You up it. You never go below. You never try to just meet it. Right now, they're meeting one of the standards by a foot. Think about that. All you need is a car doing this, as Mr. Dirk pointed out, and you're below the minimum. So why are we dealing with minimums? At least, take the minimum, take the ideal, split it in half, in which case they still fail by 35 feet. The next thing I want to cover is the, is the fact that, if you look at the subdivision code, it's impossible to get an as-of-right driveway or road out of this development. You can't meet three, the three... You can't meet three, the 305 feet, clearly. So what does that say? It says that you're only allowed to, to do this project if it's a 40B. And the people in this development, in this 40B, they're not going to get the same level of, of safety protection as an as-of-right project. What, what is that saying? Saying that, to me, it says, you're a second-class citizen. You don't deserve the same level of protection. And I think that's absolutely unconscionable. So, so in summary, I asked them to amend their table, show all the distances so the ZBA can understand it. And then I have one last thing, is that the Bayside, could you explain why you put your cable down by 115 School Street instead of by the site? The speed cable, the count cable?
I have no explanation for why, but we had the second set of data, which corroborated our data, which was taken west of, west of Piper Road.
Okay, I don't think we've seen that data, because when you first did the, the count, the cables were way down by Chadwick Road. So to me, that gives a false impression of the traffic on, on School Street, because people coming out of Chadwick, turning onto School, they then turn onto Piper Road before they get to the site. So you're really not capturing the traffic going right by the site and right by this driveway, unless you've since amended that and put your cables over where Tetra Tech did, which is about where that utility pole is on the hill. So if, if you have that, fine, but we'd like to see that.
That data has already been provided by Tetra Tech, and that's the data I'm referring to.
Okay, so you're willing to go with Tetra Tech's counts and speeds? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, they corroborate our counts and speed.
Okay, thank you.
Is there somebody else? Yes, please. We'll, we'll get to everybody, but I just want to make sure people haven't spoken yet.
Hi, I'm Supriya Gulguni. I live on 2 Piper Road, which is Piper and School Street corner. I, I just have one question about, anybody can answer. Which one is more dangerous? Is it going up the hill? Up the hill or coming down the hill? Which, 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 which one is more dangerous? Anybody, I mean, or you can answer.
Who are you posing the question to?
Anybody who did the traffic study.
I don't know, is, is that an appropriate question?
I, I wanted to know, like-
I understand the question.
Are you asking which is more dangerous?
Yeah, coming down the hill or going up the hill on School Street?
I, I don't know if that's a relevant question or how we would answer it.
In the sense for the sightlines.
On, you mean on School Street?
Yeah, on the School Street.
What hill?
If you are coming down the hill-
What hill?
And somebody is coming, taking a left turn, uh-
Oh, the, the gray-
Going towards Concord.
You're talking about the grade, the 5% grade coming from West Acton Center?
Correct, going to Concord.
Going to Concord, which is 80% west.
But the, but the slope, the grade is west of the site drive, correct?
But I don't think we have any data, do we, that would determine whether or not something is more dangerous than the other, so-
I don't know, I'm just trying to, just trying to pinpoint their location and then see if somebody can answer the question, because I didn't know, I understood where the location was.
So there is a Summit Drive, right? And Summit Drive, if, so if you have the road, there will be a road, if it is, is
I mean, if, if it's helpful, you need a, you need a longer sight distance coming down the hill than you do coming up the hill, if that's helpful. So if you're traveling eastbound or coming down the hill, you need a longer sight distance than you do if you're coming westbound, because you're going up the hill. So if, if that's helpful.
Yeah, correct.
So you need a longer sight line looking to the right as you're coming out of Summit Drive?
Correct, and then somebody is coming every three minutes in the morning in the traffic. I, I'm just, yeah. Taking the left turn on the Summit Road, going towards Concord.
I mean, it's, it's a smaller number. The total volume of traffic associated with the project in and out is roughly about one vehicle every three minutes during the time you were, not all the vehicles are coming out. That number's actually, it's a smaller number.
Yeah, I, I understand, but in the morning, when it's a rush hour?
This is being recorded. Can you please try to speak into the microphone? I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt.
So, you know, right now, we are, we are seeing the vehicle on the, on the School Street. So I'm talking, if, that's, that is the one going towards Concord, right?
That, that's, that's correct, yes, yes.
They're going east, yeah.
And that's, that's the longest sight line. So if you want to know, you need to see further, looking to the west, looking to the right, you need a longer sight line to safely come out of that driveway than you do looking to the west, oh, sorry, to the east. So coming up the hill. So looking towards Piper Road. You need a shorter sight line looking towards Piper Road, and a longer sight line looking away from Piper Road, because you're coming down the hill. Vehicles require more distance to stop.
So that, that, that vehicle that is going to east will need more time to stop?
Correct, correct.
Which it doesn't have, because there is not much distance.
It meets-
Because the car is coming out of Summit, right?
Yeah, I, I think what you, right, I think what you've heard from everybody is that it meets, it meets the minimum requirements for that safe distance to be able to stop. It's just over that distance. They're saying it needs to be 235. They're saying they, they have around 240, so they're 241. So they're, they're over the minimum that's required.
And that 235, if you're going by the speed limit?
Driving 32 miles an hour, coming down the hill at a 5.5% grade.
Okay, and then, that, it's down the hill, so nobody's even almost seeing the vehicle coming out there, which is coming like, they're not, somebody coming down may not be even expecting a vehicle coming there.
Right, when that's what this distance is based on, based on the fact that you need to, you, you're not expecting it, it comes out, you see it, you have to perceive it, react, apply the brakes. And so that, the distance is based on that.
Okay. And I have one more question about the way, when you mentioned all the stop, you know, there is something like a recommended distance, which is stop, distance required for the stopping. Does it consider all the, you know, it's up the hill and it's a curvy road? Does, in the standard, is it considered, or does it consider it as a, like, normal road? You know, because there is a problem with, with, you know, it, it being a curvy road and up the hill, it's dangerous.
Right, and that's why we explained that we applied grade correction factors to get those numbers for the requirements.
So that is considered in that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Gentlemen, oh, I'm sorry. Whoever wants to, between the two of you, who wants to come up first?
Alyssa Nickel, School Street. I have a question for Mr. Cram. Is that correct? Okay. The Ashtoe recommendations, I, I understood all of the tables and the calculations and the adjustments. My daughter's in driver's ed right now, and they're learning about speed limits, and obviously, in less-than-ideal weather conditions, you're supposed to go under the speed limit. Are these numbers based on ideal road conditions? So if it is raining hard or snowing, with these numbers, have these numbers already factored in all road conditions, all driving conditions?
They don't factor in all driving conditions, but Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't it considered a wet pavement that we, that it's assessed on to assume? We can't, you know, assume the worst case all the time. It doesn't assume that you have an icy road, for instance. Typically, engineers and towns design the roads so hopefully they don't ice up in the wintertime. But it's a wet pavement is what they use for the coefficient of friction.
Okay, great, thank you. So I guess my concern is that you don't need to factor in worse conditions all the time, but just one time. And if we are just meeting the minimum or meeting it by one foot, I think that that, as David said, is unconscionable. I think that we need to, to go look at our local measurements, our, our codes for stopping sight distance and intersection sight distance, and we need to look at the ideal Ashtoe standards. I would also request that the ZBA require the applicant to look at the deed or conduct a survey of that property which they are crossing over, because we do not believe that the property line of the O'Briens' property is correctly drawn. I believe it was in the 1940s, 1950s, that School Street was regraded. And it's our understanding that the O'Briens' property extends into School Street. So the applicant does not, if that's the case, have control over a significant portion of that sight line. So I think a survey or looking at the deed would be a good idea to require from the
I just want to answer a question.
Not now, she didn't have a question, I don't think.
Well, she, no, she asked us to do something, and I just want to, she said the survey was incorrect.
Just to clarify, I asked the ZBA to make that a request. I didn't, just know I have a question.
Yeah, and I took, I took note of that, so I'm gonna leave it at that for now and, and not ask for rebuttal. I'd like to get to other people who haven't spoken yet.
Hi, my name is Rob Hamilton. I live at 62 River Street. And I just wanted to amplify on what Alyssa said a moment ago about road conditions, being that this is an east-west running street, there are times of year when the sun is in the eyes of the drivers going one way in the morning and go, and the other way in the evening, and that that's something to factor in as well when regarding a sightline minimum that's 2% within the minimum. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you, are you both together? She's speaking for you?
No.
Oh, yeah, I recognized you. I'm sorry. We'll get to you next, Michaela.
I'm Kathleen Sardan. I live at number eight Sandy Drive, which most people know is, you know, you pull out, the way you get out of Sandy Drive is you go on School Street. At the beginning of the meeting, Mr. Hoffman, you talked about, like, there's a lot of emotion connected to all of this, and I won't get into too much of it, but my emotion toward this town is that we go over and above, and we do things that benefit people maybe more than other towns do. Having the neighborhood, I mean, not, not having neighborhood schools and busting every kid to every school is over and above, and it's not cost-effective. It's an awesome aspect of Acton. My son went to Minuteman. He's only one of a handful, but every year, I mean, we vote to stay in, we vote to build a new Minuteman, and that's wonderful. So I don't understand really why we have to do something that isn't wonderful for our town, when it's not like we're desperate for funding or tax revenue or whatever. But that's the emotional part. The practical part here is that my kids, who are in their twenties now, spent a lot of time at the bus stop at the end of Sandy Drive in School Street in the winter, where the snow was piled up such that anyone coming westbound, if they were going to turn into our street, they would not see the kids standing there past the snow. And there were no sidewalks cleared for them to go somewhere where the bus drivers could see them. So I don't understand how the applicants, who have been maybe asked to make sure that the snow removal, you know, goes well. I imagine once the project is done and they move on and someone's managing the project, those folks would be in charge. And I can't even, I could never get the town to come and take that snow away. So I drove my kids down. I went down there with them. The weather is definitely a factor. And even when they come clear the sidewalks, they throw more snow into the road, so that ends up, you know, making the road even more narrow when people are trying to go up and down School Street. It's probably like that other streets in town, but it's pretty dangerous going around that corner, even after they clear the sidewalks and put more snow in the road. So that's just my two cents. I would also hope that the town would, I, I was at the Conservation Commission meeting, one of the last meetings, and those folks apparently spent a lot of time making standards for the town, zoning board made standards for the town, and I would like those to be upheld. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I would just like to add that when the Zoning Board of Appeals approves special permits, they can do so with conditions to ensure that some of these things get done.
Michaela Moran, 80 School Street. Question for any of the traffic consultants. When a roadway has a guardrail on one side of it, what is, is there any difference in the standard of how you measure these things? Because in general, I think that drivers driving down a roadway with a big guardrail on the side of it tend to stay toward the center of the road rather than to the far side. And that drawing shows the car heading east, staying on the far side. It's very close to what would be the guardrail there, and I find that a little implausible. If that car was moved toward the center line, you would fail the sightlines. When you're going around a curve, one tends to drive toward the center of that line rather than the far side. So I think that's a little disingenuous to, to have that car on the far side. So I, I disagree with this drawing, and I would like to state that I think that it's fudged.
Jeffrey, are you able to answer the question about the guardrail?
Anytime that there's a roadside object that probably is about two feet in height, people shy away from it, whether you're walking, riding a bike, or, or in a vehicle. It's a, it tends to make you shift a little bit closer towards the center line in this case. So that's pretty common. Any roadside object is going to cause you to kind of adjust your position in, in the roadway.
And, and does that greatly impact any of the calculations, in your opinion?
Not, I, I don't believe it would affect it to the extent that the sightline would fall below the 235 feet. I can look at it again, but I don't think the shift is going to be that significant that it's going to cause it to drop below that minimum requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Morrison. I live at 8 Piper Road. I'm a member of the South Acton Neighborhood Association. I've spoken before. I don't want to talk about the diagrams or the distance for safety stopping. The point that I would like some further understanding about is the suggestion as to the volume of exits and entrances back into Mr. Paquette's project, assuming that the 28 townhouses are built, some portion of which would have three bedrooms, the majority of which would have two. And I presume many of them would have at least two vehicles associated with them, because they would be occupied by families, most of which have two adults that are driving adults. So the numbers that were suggested for the morning exit, and then those that would be returning at the end of the night, as I heard them and as I have read them, seem very difficult to comprehend. I live at 8 Piper Road, so I'm two houses down from that collector intersection of School Street and Piper. And I don't have a mate, and I don't have children, but I am in and out of my driveway probably twice a day. And in the years when I had a career, it was maybe three times a day, leaving for work and coming back for work. When Jillian and I, Jillian Watson, who lives next door to me in the Gable property, we are both abutters to the Piper Lane property. When we heard the numbers, we thought, does that suggestion imply that only 50% of the people who would live in the new project will be employed? Because the numbers seem to be just incredible, I guess I would have to say that. And I don't want to abuse or in any way insult whatever the premise and calculations are. I would just like either the Zoning Board of Appeals to ask for further edification of those numbers, or some narrative that would help me to understand how that one thing we can control, which is the introduction of a, a number of new persons with- we can control, which is the introduction of a number of new persons with vehicles in an already very congested and safety-exposed area, would have so few people leaving those townhouses every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Roland, do you have any information you'd like to add with respect to the comment about how the traffic is calculated?
Well, the traffic trip generation numbers, they come from the Institute of Traffic Engineers who periodically provide a manual that gets thicker every time about, where they collect all the statistics nationwide and assign trip generation numbers to a variety, great variety of land uses. And, you know, I didn't double-check the numbers that were here provided tonight, but there is a category for low-rise, multifamily use, which you could argue that this is perhaps a condominium as opposed to a low-rise, multifamily use. I think there used to be at least a category for condominium, but the numbers don't change that much. You know, I, when I see, I always take the 10 trips per day number based on single-family homes. And 10 trips per day based on 28 single-family homes don't trigger the local traffic study requirement under any rules of the Town of Acton. So, you know, that's sort of my baseline here. And I believe that probably, given the proximity to the train station, there would be fewer trips than the 10 per day, because people will take advantage of the proximity of commuter rail. But that's conjecture, I can't prove that.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment they'd like to add? That's relative to safety and traffic and not redundant?
It's not redundant.
Go ahead.
I want to make a clarification. Jean Barreson, again, from 80 School Street. Mr. Cram, you stated that the 10-foot back from the intersection of Summit Drive to School Street was obtained by local, by the SANA. I would, I would like, you said neighborhood, you got the 10 feet from the neighborhood in your presentation. I beg to differ with you, and I want you to look at the first Bayside report. It had 14.5 feet, sightlines failed. It had 10 feet, which was, which was presented by Bayside, not by us, because we objected to that. And then it got close. And then the road was moved and it got better. What I'm trying to get at, and this is subjective, these plans have been doctored and tailored in multiple ways, and we've seen it from the PEL to the first presentation, to the rebuttals. In fact, in Vanessa's first report, they required easements for those abutting Piper Lane, which required, which was not addressed. So I just want to clarify, you didn't get it from us. Your team made the 10-foot standard, which improved the sight distance, the sight-stopping distance, not from us. Check your records. Thank you.
Sarah Fredericksen, West Acton. I have a couple of questions and then some comments. First of all, the, up there where this car is on the right, is that including the moat that's supposed to be there, this eight-foot abutment and eight-foot-deep gully? It seems to me like this drawing is drawn on its own, outside of the plans that at least I looked at, that were submitted. So I would like to make sure that, A, I agree with everything that's been said here, so I dispute the whole thing to begin with, but I would like to have the car on the right measured from the proposed driveway, not a sketch that's made separate. So that's just, I guess, a question. Is that car, you don't even see the, the road is supposed to be how long? It's like 14 feet?
14.5.
14.5. It doesn't look 14.5 because the length of a car, so anyways, next, next one is, I'm sorry, point of order, I would like to speak to the chair.
Let's hear the rest of the questions first.
The speed measurements, I agree with what I've heard. I feel like they should be conducted right there because anybody that's traveled through there knows that they're speeding by that time, that anywhere before or after could be quite different. The car counts, I think we should look at what's actual in Acton. We did a study once that looked at two and a half cars per, per housing unit in Acton using the excise tax. It was really easy to calculate. Also, I'd like to make note that you look at the yellow line, if you get on there. I was in a case down by Alewife, and the lawyers for the town of Cambridge told us that it was where cars actually traveled, not where the line is. And you'll see that the, if you get a satellite photo of the area, you'll see where the, this is what they did in Cambridge, in support of my case, actually, that the tires can be seen from the satellite view, the rubber, where the rubber meets the road is where the legal line is. And then you'll see that there, the yellow line is quite worn away by the cars. I'm very interested in what version, you were talking about how the version had been changed and the version that was by, in the court referred to as if that's the same version, because it seems to me a lot of these traffic engineers, you know, live to justify projects. You are, the peer review person who's supposed to be unbiased, but I wonder who he's working for, really, because he seems to be defending the applicant's measurements and, you know...
His name was actually submitted by the town, I believe.
Oh, okay.
It was agreed to by both the applicant and...
Thank you.
The South Acton Neighborhood Association.
Yes, and I would hope that he would defend the...
Oh, sorry, had nothing to do with you guys, sorry.
He would defend the, he said, have to be practical. Practical for who? Practical for builders or practical for safety? So I think that that's very interesting. Then I would like, urge you to err on the side of caution. If this was an emergency where you were dealing with housing that was in extreme need, if you look at the quote-unquote "needs," the folks that you're building for can actually buy units on Route 2A. We have thousands of units in Acton already that can be bought within their income levels. So a minimum might be okay when you're out in the Midwest where there's not hills and not, you know, all of these obstructions, but I don't think the minimum is okay when you're talking about a curve on a hill that's tight. So there's a tight curve on a hill, and so I feel like it's not appropriate to use these minimums. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can somebody from your team answer just the question? What is the source of this document? What is the basis for it?
I don't follow...
Come from town maps or...
No, survey.
On-the-ground survey.
Just for the record, what I was trying to say is, all the information that Mr. Cram has based his distances on and Mr. Dirk has reviewed, has been on-the-ground survey. Now, that on-the-ground survey is not only Mr. Goldsmith's office surveyors going out there, it's also doing research into the deeds. That's how you do a survey. It's a two-part process. You look at all the deeds, you match them up with other documents, you know...
The right-of-way.
The right-of-way documents, and you do all that stuff, you create a survey, and then you measure lines. So it's difficult when I sit here tonight and people, after you've hired someone as an expert, they just come in and they say, "It's wrong." Okay? They tell us that there's somebody at 96 School Street that has a different dimension than a registered land surveyor has gone out, surveyed, looked at the deeds. These are based on deeds, okay? And this is based on survey.
Okay. I don't want to debate that here.
No, no, I'm just trying to say that. I'm sorry. The second statement is, there's a lot of statements being made. She talked a moment ago, I'm not gonna pay much attention to it, about the wall. The wall's 200 feet up the road. It has nothing to do with the intersection. So there's a lot of confusion going on here. We'll answer the questions, but I just want to leave tonight saying, you hired a peer review person who says that the distances are appropriate. The ASHTO distance is what HAC would use. It's a minimum distance, but based on a lot of conservative assumptions. Okay? So you have to create some distance as, you know, and the reason that 40B came into existence, and I'm not putting Acton down at all, is they said, "Well, you know, town adopts standards that are more than you need." And so the Board of Appeals gets to apply in each and every case what a reasonable standard is if it varies from the town's standard.
Yeah, we're starting to move away from...
No, no, no.
...the issue of safety and such. I get your point about standards, but I'd like to keep it there.
Thank you. I wasn't, just for clarification, I wasn't calling him wrong. I was saying that it's our job to measure it ourselves.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Could I ask a question just about the surveying, just to close that loop hopefully with the applicant? With the surveys that you've done, particularly the concerns with respect to the O'Brien property line, I believe it was referred to, do you all have a stamped survey plan? These aren't stamped versions, and perhaps that will put people's fears at ease.
There are stamped plans in the actual application package that was submitted. It showed that right-of-way line. It's also, you can go online to Acton site. There are the street layouts for School Street, which show this layout exactly where it is here. We've located the deeds for those properties as well as the right-of-way lines, and they're all correct.
Okay, thank you.
David Hahn, 105 School Street. Now that the ZBA and the audience and everyone else has been subjected to the battle of the traffic engineers, I have a suggestion to, you know, sort of resolve the sightline issue, which is that Mr. Ringwald's firm has a, has a plan, it has topos on it, we know exactly where the driveway is, they want to put it, we know what elevation that pavement is going to be at. And I would recommend or suggest that a third-party surveyor go out there, put a monument at that location, the correct distance back from the street, which as far as I can tell is the road width of 12 plus 14 and a half. I mean, that's what the thing says. So to me, it's 26 and a half feet from the center line, if you will. But anyway, put the monument where it's going to be, get a third-party surveyor, shoot the lines under the supervision of you guys, our representative, the town engineer, Bruce, whoever else wants to be there, so that we can agree on how it's done and what those lines are, and then we can, you can go on and debate minimums, ideal, et cetera, et cetera. But right now, we've got a battle going on. You've got number, I'm sure you have an excess of numbers floating in your head and are probably swimming in all these numbers, but that would be my suggestion. It won't take very long. It's easy to do, and then we have a baseline that everybody can sort of agree to about what these numbers are, so. Then also, I just, you know, I'm trying to stick to the facts, but I do want to point out that I'm an abutter within 300 feet of this property at 105 School Street. Within a period of nine months, my property got hit six times by cars. And I'm not talking fender benders, I'm talking major head-on collisions, spin-outs, cars in my front yard, my house is 40 feet back from the street, I've had cars near the house. I had $20,000 worth of fencing wiped out. They wiped out 14-inch by 14-inch major posts at the driveway, they split granite mailbox posts in half. This is a dangerous, dangerous street. I urge you to look at the aerial of School Street as a continuous series of S-curves, and people just drift right around them. So I just want to add that to the mix here, that Mr. Dirk points out, there's a practicality issue here, not just, not just a straight bunch of numbers. So I want you to urge the board to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? What I'd like to do now, we don't formally close the meeting, correct? Because we're continuing talking first? Do we have a document that we need to...
You already made an announcement, but you might want to repeat it. And we have a continuation agreement here, as we always do, to be signed by the applicant and by you.
Okay. Great. So just to reiterate, thank you all for attending. We will be continuing on Tuesday, October 1st, at 7:30 in this building.
We only have an agreement to continue to here.
You gotta give the thumb drive to...
We are adjourned.
We have to give the thumb drive to Vivian.
Your chairman for tonight.